5:30 PM. And I'd like to call in Katie Henry, Finance Director, to present our topic for tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come to you this evening. We have several topics for you, so this is going to be a very, a very full work session. I'm hoping to have some dialogue, so we'll get the, the first part of the meeting underway, which is more of a presentation, and then we'll start into more of the dialogue piece of what we have for you this evening. So the first piece of what we have is, is discussing investments. So our current situation, our last investment policy was, or current one, I guess, was last reviewed in January of 1989. This is a very old policy. You can see it in your packets on page eight. So there are several ORSs that have been amended multiple times. It doesn't take into account ORS 294-135. Our maximum maturity for our investments is 18 months. It takes out the ability to think of long-term investments that we may want to have, and emphasizes our cash flow and liquidity over, making money over the long term. And as you know, we have utilities, for example, such as our wastewater utility, that is looking at 20-year plans and 30-year plans. Infrastructure takes a very long time, and we want to be able to invest money that will earn the most possible for the amount of time we need to be setting it aside for. And right now, we can't do that, so we're not maximizing our funds right now. And so, we are recommending, we being the Finance Department, the City Manager Executive Team, I know it's all in a little bit of flux right now, so maybe I should say "I." I'm recommending that we update the investment policy to allow more diversification, which will require submitting it to the Oregon Short Term Fund Board and reviewing it on a regular basis, so we won't be waiting 25 years to update it again. I strongly recommend outside assistance with the policy. And investment laddering, there are people who specialize in this, in looking at cash flow and how much investments do we need at any given year, any given month, and making sure that those all flow smoothly. And a lot of the expertise in Oregon is held by government portfolio advisors. And we have with us tonight Deanne Woodring, who I have been working with for, oh goodness, over 10 years, I think, in various municipalities, on various projects. And she is here with us tonight. I've asked her to give us a quote on what it would take for her to do some of the consulting work for us, and I've also asked her to come and talk with you tonight to give what she and her firm could do for us at the city. So I'm going to, with that, turn it over to Deanne and let her share what she has for us this evening.
Thank you, Katie, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I also have with me my senior advisor Frank McDonald to introduce you tonight as well. I'm going to pull up my presentation and just give you some background and give you a quick 101 on investing for public funds. And let me just get this up first, and sharing now.
And just a side note while she shares this, I did not see this in the packet. I did email it to all of you last week. Claudia, if you could add it to the packet on the website, it's in the email dated August 20th.
Yes, it'll be posted on the website.
Can you see that now? I want to make sure it's up clearly for you.
It looks like you paused screen sharing.
Is that working?
There you go.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, and it's nice to see all of you. As Katie mentioned, Katie and I have worked together on several projects at a couple of different ITs over the last 10 years. And so I wanted to take a moment, introduce GPA to you, what we do for cities and counties throughout Oregon, and share with you some ideas to look at within the city's portfolio and structure that I think would be really beneficial. I'm trying to move forward on this. I'm going to have to stop sharing. Frank, can you pull that up for me, please?
Yep, one second.
I'll start talking before we go. So Government Portfolio Advisors was founded as an Oregon company. I am the owner, primary owner of the firm, as a women-owned firm, and it was established in 2014. My partner and I founded it in the belief of supporting and partnering with local governments in Oregon as well as across the country. We currently manage approximately $28 billion in assets for local governments, and our primary goal is to support and understand each of our clients very closely, understand cash flow needs, understand purpose of investing, and help to align the councils and the members with the finance team to make sure all your objectives are being met. And I need to get this slide up. We currently work with 32 Oregon clients, of which, we'll get to the slideshow here, let me catch up with this. We currently work with 10, oh, wrong slide, Frank.
Can I interrupt for just one sec? So this particular part isn't in our packet, correct? And you said you emailed it in August to us? Is that correct, Katie? Because the three of us don't have it.
Yes, I emailed it on August 20th.
I can't find it, Chris can't find it, and Sal can't. I'll look again. Yeah, none of us can find it.
I will, I can send it again right now.
That would be great. Thank you.
I have it up, sorry about that, you guys. Okay, I'll continue here, and you should be able to get that in the package by Katie sends that to you. So we currently work with 32 Oregon clients. We manage $8.56 billion in assets. I have listed here the cities that we work with, Albany, Ben, Carvalis, and we work with all sizes of cities, anywhere ranging from $10 million up to $500 million. And we have served Oregon clients as an advisor since 2008. The key point in working with an investment advisor is an investment advisor has fiduciary responsibility. That means that we are here to work on your behalf, and we not only handle the portfolio management, as Katie mentioned, we also are very focused on policy, on structure of your portfolio. It's kind of the why of why you are investing. When we look at the structure, the investment program is all under you, the council and the finance committee, you are the stewards and the fiduciaries at the top level. And as Katie mentioned, your policy is quite old. I also serve on the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. I'm the longest-serving member of the board, and that board oversees every policy here in the state of Oregon. So when I see a policy this old, I immediately get excited to get my hands on it, to help to align it not only to national standards for policies, but also for the short-term funds suggestions on how cities should be setting up their policies for optimizing portfolio structures. The policy, again, will be aligned to where the city council is the, the main fiduciaries with the delegations of duties to the finance committee. And then there, your city finance department, I had the opportunity to meet with Katie and some of the members there, and just getting the understanding of what the cash flow analysis is of the portfolio, you identify that there's longer-term monies that you don't, while they're budgeted for, you don't need them spending today. And that's where our opportunity is to create a more balanced portfolio structure for the long run of the portfolio. So in other words, we would go through and look at, you're, you're currently sitting at about $60 million in total assets, so we look at how much of that do you need today, and then how much can be invested in a short-term horizon to optimize and use interest rates. Many of you are probably seeing the news that we're hearing about the federal funds rate expected to decline, so this is a beautiful opportunity to look at that opportunity over the next two to three months, to structure the portfolio differently, to balance that expect, expectation of interest rates coming off their highs that we've seen over the last several years. Also, it's very important to have dynamic reporting and compliance reporting to procedures, and it's what, the reason GPA was formed is really saying, where are the tools that our clients need to make them better and to be able to be transparent, to be able to see what's happening within their investment portfolio and to be accountable to that? So that's where GPA comes in, in working and aligning our resources to the cities, in that we help to look at strategy focuses with the primary objectives of safety, liquidity, and return. Every local government in the country, that's our primary focus, is you don't want to lose money, but we do have an obligation to optimize those, those balances. And as interest rates are changing every day, how you do that and how you create that with a disciplined approach is extremely important. So GPA has created the state-of-the-art compliance reporting, ongoing reporting, that your team would be available. We have a portal that links right into your bank and your custodial work. We understand your needs for audit reporting and for support all of those roles. The first question everybody asks us is, you know, what's our value for our clients? And I think the biggest value is really peace of mind and knowing that your team has their eyes on everything to make sure that your, your funds are balanced. And then in other words, that means that you're not keeping everything very, very short, like your policy is requiring right now, because over interest rate cycles, we can add significant dollars over the long run in portfolio structure. We also use transparency as kind of the big term we're seeing throughout the country on, on local governments, is how do we increase that awareness? And a lot of that is through your reporting and your structure of the policy. We use benchmarks to make sure that what we're saying we're managing and how that portfolio is being structured is reportable and doing what it should be doing. And I think the real key with the way we approach our clients is, we know that this is your money, these are your decisions, we're there to make you recommendations, so nothing is transacted without Katie's approval when she does those trades, so she has the full understanding, is able to answer everything that any of you would need at any time. We are always there supporting Katie's operation with our experience and depth of knowledge in the markets. The tools that we use, I'm going to not go too deep on the technical processes that we do, but there's, there's basically three tools that we use in managing our clients' portfolios. Duration has to do with your average maturity. As Katie mentioned, right now, you're limited to only buying 18 months and shorter, and you really don't have too many investments. We typically would allow our, our investments to go out as far as five years, with an average maturity around one and a half years on your total portfolio. We also work in the asset classes that you're allowed to do by state, which is US Treasuries, Agencies, Corporate Securities, and Commercial Paper. And then we also use a tool of using the yield curve. Some news out there right now, we've been in an inverted curve, and there's different dynamics that we use on our investment decisions when there are different shapes and things happening within the economic cycle. And I, and the real key is, this strategy is about risk management as well as investment management. We often kind of have to step back, and when we're investing, to me, having that balanced portfolio is a less risky portfolio, because you're not, you don't have all your eggs in one basket. If you think about all your money staying under 18 months and very short, you're so exposed to what happens with the Federal Reserve and those changes in short-term rates, whereas when we're balancing and diversifying that maturity structure, it becomes more, much more healthy and can hold up through changes in those rates. A quick graphic of that for you is, is this is interest rate changes over the last 25 years, and my point of this slide is to say, yes, they change. So how can we create a transparent and long-term strategy that doesn't make us bounce around as much? And so I'm not going to go into too much detail, because I know you guys don't have the slides right in front of you, but the bottom line is, we try to increase the earnings over what you'd earn in short-term cash, under 18 months, with a dynamic investment portfolio that over interest rate periods will add significant dollars to the returns in the portfolio. Skip that one. What we do on strategy to, to balance that risk management is, we're very disciplined in defining what a liquidity amount should be held on hand, and typically with city governments, we're running at 30% of the total portfolio in equivalent cash and LGIP pool investments, and then the remaining 70% is invested. This is kind of a graph of a client that's similar to you, where we started with really not having a lot invested at all, and then you see that core fund really gets stabilized out in that blue line. That helps us maintain a, a discipline in the investment structure, which is those graphs down below, where we establish what maturity structure we'll have, and we'll always have something coming off and maturing, so we don't have to worry about having added liquidity if needed. And then we also have targets, asset allocation bands as well. So when you're investing anything, if you think about how you invest your own money and you look at different benchmarks and targets, we help local governments apply those same targets and expectations to your portfolio. The allowable securities that you're allowed to purchase, US Treasuries, Agencies, LGIP, Certificates of Business, Commercial Paper, and that's what you currently have in your policy. By statute, you're allowed to buy corporate securities, municipal securities, and a longer maturity structure. So that's what we would come in and first start with, with you on, is establishing a, let's look at your policy, let's bring that strategy component in at the same time, and that would allow you to evaluate what is the right risk profile for you. So it's all about your needs and your purpose, and then we'd come with the reasoning to support and answer any questions that you at the council level have regarding the policy. And the way the Oregon Short Term Fund Board works in a review is, the, the policy would be drafted out, it would go to the Oregon Short Term Fund Review for, that's the State Treasury. They would make any comments on that, and then it would come back to you for approval. So you would know that it's not only vetted by Katie and myself and advisors, but then it goes to a, a group of your peers, plus the Treasury staff, to make any comments on that. So it's very well-vetted to make sure that the risk profiles are established based on policy, based on a statute. And then I think a, a big add that we bring too is really highlighting and bringing out the actual reporting of what you have. So this is an example where we have a portfolio that we have a core and an investment component. We show the yield right there, around 4%. It shows the different asset classes that we're investing in, and this allows our clients to have a really clear picture of what's happening in the portfolio, what the structure of that is, and we get, everybody gets used to kind of the cadence of what we're expecting to see. So, so for example, if we're looking at the liquidity on this portfolio, right now it's sitting at $39 million, we might have set a band that we don't ever want to be below $35 million and never want to be above $50 million, and those bands allow us to make sure that we're disciplined in communicating with your team there on all factors of the portfolio. And then we're really big on, we probably overkill, but we're really big on accessing reporting for our clients, so you can have as many users as you need on our portal. We present cash flow, GASB reporting, holdings, holdings reports, and, and ongoing enhanced statements that provide a clear picture for you at the council level. And then we're constantly training and educating. Training is really important for staff and, and for council to understand, sometimes we do use lingo, but it's important, we really embrace the opportunities to share knowledge about the investments. We are always trying to be in front of our clients. When big news comes out, you'll get a white paper from us. We do a weekly update on the markets and make sure that our clients are aware of anything that can impact your portfolio. And then I'm just going to touch on the steps and the processes that we would work in, in working with the city. We start with your investment policy, get that thing brushed off a little bit. 1989 is a long time, and again, there's nothing bad about it, it has a very limited scope, but there's been a lot of changes and opportunities. I'm sure your portfolio probably in '89 was about $10 million, so it, it probably has some opportunities to add some diversification in it. We prepare it for the Short Term Fund Board, and then Katie would take it to the board herself, and then we would be there to support any of the questions that come back. Then we'd go through and look at your historical balances and the purposes of your individual funds, and prepare an analysis and a strategy that we think would be suitable for the city. And then we would, the next step is to move into actually doing the investing. But in Katie's approach, and I totally agree with that, there's kind of a phase one and a phase two. Well, we'll start with, let's look at that policy, let's look at how it should look. Once that's all established, then we would move into the actual investment process. So that is really it for my presentation today. Is there any questions?
Councillors, have any questions? Councillor Chenoweth?
It's an assumption that I have, but I just want to put it out there to make sure that it is an accurate assumption, that moving to such a process is going to, and, and is going to either through increased revenues or decreased losses pay for itself.
It does pretty, it does, that's exactly right. Through our execution and our capabilities to manage the portfolio, the goal is to improve earnings by having a more balanced portfolio, which adds, adds value to you and pretty, and does pretty much pay for itself. Just on our executions alone and the way we, execution means when we go do a transaction for you, we have access to over 45 broker-dealers, and we are very competitive on that pricing, and when we do that, we're acting on your behalf without any markups on those trades. So that is our goal, to align our purpose and our service to the city, to make the earnings definitely compensate and, and more for our services.
Have you ever gathered data to verify that that's actually the end result?
We look at the way portfolios have been positioned before we start, so for you, it would be having a short portfolio position relative to the long-term outcomes. Where is that value proposition? So yes, we do do that. Today, I do have to say, though, the environment is inverted, so it's going to take us, so as we go out, let me spec up on that. So as we go out and start investing today, the interest rate on two-year securities is about 4%. In short money, you're earning more like four and a quarter. So we have some time to work through, and the reason we are investing in that two-year area is because the market is anticipating that those short-term rates are going to go down. So there's some complexities in building that, but that is the, the outcome that we have. At Marion County, I think we've done a really great track record as far as adding value in that portfolio with our service, and, and also just bringing priests of mind to the, to the investment program.
So I'm not sure I was clear on my question. What, what I'm after is, do we have, do you have historical data showing for other organizations that you have taken over and done this with, that, that would indicate that the result of such was an increase in performance for the, for those funds?
Yes.
Okay. I'd love to, is that in the slides that we didn't get, or?
No, but I can get you some. I can get Katie some data.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
And, and I can tell you, Council, that I was the one who worked with Deanne in, in Marion County at getting this, this launched, and, and we did see a significant increase in it. There are other reasons for this, one being this bond that's going to the public. So I, I want to remind you that there is a maximum amount we can have in LGIP, and, and so we need the option to invest other places. And with such an old investment policy that we have right now, we're pretty much limited to putting it in a savings account or something like that. And whereas with having someone in our corner where we can discuss with them, okay, here's the construction plan, here are the planned payments out that we will be doing on this large project, we can plan, plan out, how do we want to invest these bond revenues so that we have them producing the most amount of money as we need them coming due? And then also the wastewater, and hopefully as we start talking about stormwater utilities and our other infrastructure needs, there's these needs for these longer-term investments that currently we're, our hands are completely tied until we get the new, the new policy set up.
Are we, thank you. I, Katie, I understand you have a relationship with them, but I'm wondering, are we going to be looking at other companies as well, instead of just One Choice?
The plan was to piggyback on a, on a contract with other cities who have already done the RFP process, and to piggyback on their contract. It's a, a known and, and common purchasing procurement process.
And just wondering, it just seems a little, is it, is it normal that the company that you're going to invest with also makes your investment policy? Does that feel at all like a?
It's part, it's part of the scope that we often do with our cities, and the policy is your policy, so what we will bring on that role is lay the statute out, lay the, the recommended structures, and so, yes, it is very normal, that's part of our role. And we, we help on the annual review, so annually, you have to go back and look at your policy, so that typically is your advisor's role to help on both.
And then in that, oh, go ahead.
I have done this with the City of Sherwood and with Marion County, and the, the diff, I started trying to do it without the advisor position and just contacting the Oregon State Short Terms, all the, all the letters, board, and, and ended up needing to go with a financial advisor just because of needing the, the advisor to jump through the various hoops and getting it down the road and getting it fine-tuned. So it, yes, it is, it is a normal process. Now, you don't always have, I mean, you typically have someone else who's the custodian at the, the bank, you know, which is a separate function, but the investment policy is dictated by the state. That's part of, part of the issue with our policy right now, is it doesn't fall into what the state guidelines are. And Deanne can talk to that a little bit, since she's on that board from the state, but, but that's part of the reason.
I guess I would just be interested in, in understanding more about Only One Choice and the RFQ or RFP that already went out, some information on that in the future before we make any decisions on it. I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
Okay.
Any other questions up here? I asked the ones that Zach wanted asked. I guess I have one more. So it says, the price for the first year, and then it says two years and beyond. So is, are, is this a long-term relationship, or is this based on just to get started in a couple of years of investment? What's the, the thought process there, Katie?
My thought process is a long-term. We don't have the staff to run investments as, as part of what we do. We don't have the staff or the knowledge to be buying and selling bonds and things like that. We can always discontinue it at any point if we chose to take it in-house, if we had things running well, and, but given the, the volume that we anticipate growing with our infrastructure needs and the long-term financial needs, I, I don't see it as something that would go away, I see it as something that would be ongoing.
Okay. Councillor Tocowski?
Yeah, it's clear, so what is the actual value that we anticipate investing with this firm?
Didn't quite catch that.
The value that we anticipate investing is, right now, it's close to $40 million.
So for, for $40 million, we have the $15,000 flat fee that we're sharing, and move it to 2.5 million, is that correct?
Hey, Dan, could you do me a favor? Could you get your microphone closer? You have a lot of noise in the background. Thank you.
Deanne, can you speak to the, the costing?
Yes, what we proposed was for the first year, to get you set up on the policy and get all that completed, was it just a flat fee of $15,000? And then once the investments began, how pricing for these services are, based on your portfolio size, we do a, a basis point fee. So it was approximately $31,000 for your first year, which was a five-basis-point fee. Basis point is yield, so on the portfolio, if we're earning 3.75 gross, your net after our fees would be 3.75. So it basically comes off So it basically comes off of your interest earnings. And I think the point on the, the bond proceeds, both the City of West Lynn and City of Tualatin came to us in the same position you guys are. They were about sixty million. So when you're sixty million, you can keep all your money over at the Oregon Short Term State Treasury's office. When you get over that level, you have to invest it on your own. When we start dealing with bond proceeds, there's a lot of criteria around how those are invested and monitoring theirs. And there's, because they're bond issue, they're tied to your project funds, and we have a long-term experience in managing bond proceeds. And that's kind of puts you over, and all of a sudden you're realizing, hey, we need more expertise in here to help guide us. And so that's where we're coming in. So we would assist on that balance that would be tied to your interest earnings, and help to make sure that your program, your investment program is set for a long-term future. We work with many of our clients, our water projects, the sewer projects, and you guys are all just growing. And so this kind of aligns to that growth that the city's having.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, your question, Mayor, has, was not something I had a lot of thought into, and it's actually kind of left me uneasy. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with how this procurement process is playing out. You know, in, in everything else we do in government, typically we have multiple vendors that we look at and have kind of a more in-depth procurement process. This feels a little, when I'm talking about forty million dollars of, of our money, I don't know, I'm, I'm not feeling real comfortable about how this piggybacking, or however you want to describe it, is taking place. And I don't know if I'm the only councillor who's feeling that, or the only person on the dais that's feeling that, but I, it just kind of makes me uneasy.
I'm not surprised, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I understand, and I'm also, I guess, with that also, wondering, are there some, a local company that can also provide a quote or a plan?
We, gee, well, let me come back up for that. Two things. One, when you do the piggyback, basically, City of Gresham and City of Albany both recently went RFP. The RFP is pretty extensive. You basically are going through the, the procurement process, asking the questions, you get the responses. So by piggybacking, you would be taking that same scope of service and those same responses that were received. So I think, Katie, I can give you all those responses we requested from both Gresham and from City of Albany. So you have all the procurement responses. There's about, GPA is local. We are the only Oregon-based firm that provides this service to local governments. There's two other competitors out of state that are large firms that are part of that group that compete with us. More than happy, I, I really appreciate your guys' questions regarding this. It's very important that you're comfortable, and you know that's been vetted, and we're the best team for you. So I want to make sure that's, that's upfront. So I think with that, within that piggyback, that's the part, you, you go through and you look at everybody else's responses to their standards. And that would be Katie's, the review of that and presenting that to you.
I appreciate your understanding and providing that information, because I, I do, it is a big choice, and I think that we need to be educated on that choice.
Yep.
So the next session, section of this work session has to do with purchasing and procurement. And one of those things that so far I can tell has not been clear for council, and not because of your questions tonight, but because of other questions other nights, I may refer to a lawnmower, for example, would suggest that these intergovernmental agreements where we do piggybacking, or we do state contracts, or things like that, are really highly recommended in local government, and are efficient ways to do procurements so that one government does it, and other governments around use those same procurements so that you're not spending all of the administrative time redoing procurements that other governments have already done around you. And so that's part of what I'm hoping for us to get into our procurement policy, which is part of the reason that I have these in the same work session. So that is, that is part of our next section also.
Any other questions right now? I don't think we have any more questions, but yes, we do want to have that information provided to us. And I just want to clarify, you said you're the only company in Oregon, that's an Oregon-based company that's able to do this service?
Correct. Yeah. At, at this level, with the assets under management and the specialty in serving local governments, yes. But there's others that do provide it here, so I don't want to exclude that. So there's other firms outside of Oregon that do provide it.
Okay.
So that, and those are our competitors that you would see in that, the corporate agreement.
Thank you.
And so I would bring all that information before I brought the contract to you. I wanted to make sure this, for this work session, I wanted to make sure that you had the information on why we would even be looking at a contract like this, the, the reasoning for going out to it. And I felt that Deanne was the, the best, the best person to, to bring this information to you for right now. We'll have an, an agenda item on a regular session for a contract review down the road.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate the questions. That's, that's the key, is making sure that everybody asks the questions and it's very well-vetted. And we are here to be a partner, and we'll, we'll support and go through the RFP or whatever you guys need. We, we value our, our relationships. So thanks for the time tonight, and we'll jump off.
Thanks so much, Deanne. Thank you, Frank.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Shall we move on to purchasing and procurement?
Actually, Katie, can I ask you one more question?
Sure, absolutely.
Is this investor fees, are they in your current budget?
They are not. This would be a supplemental budget request that will be coming in the, at the end of September.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Next, we have purchasing and procurement. So first, it's important for you to understand that this is a information gathering. We're not attempting to set any, any regulations, anything like that, any policies tonight. I'm, I'm really hoping to get some information, some feedback from you on some levels of, of approval and things like that as we start to, to draft the policy for, for procurement moving forward. So first, what are the basic procurement levels that matter for governments? So the first level is ten thousand dollars. Sorry, I have some sun coming through the blinds there in front of me. So ten thousand dollars is considered a micro purchase at the federal level. So in other words, if we have any federal funds, there are requirements that hit at ten thousand dollars. We have to have documentation of having received three quotes. We have to make sure that we're doing those competitive things that you're talking about. That starts at ten thousand dollars for federal funds. It starts at twenty-five thousand dollars for state funds. So ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, this is a, a small purchase. Twenty-five thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is an intermediate procurement at, for Oregon State. Anything in that level, you have to have the documentation of getting three quotes. For the small purchase, there are other requirements such as making sure that you're looking for, at minorities, looking, sure that, making sure that you're checking for local vendors, things like that. And then over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is the formal competitive bidding level. The levels that we currently have in our approval, we have one main level in our current system. So when I'm talking about a purchase order, I'm talking about someone in the city wants to buy something, and they create a purchase order to buy it, and that has to go up through the chain of approval. And right now, the top level is two-thousand-five-hundred dollars. If anything is over two-thousand-five-hundred dollars, it has to go to the city manager for approval. That amount is archaically low. After talking to executive team, talking to some other cities, my recommendation is that that be increased up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Other cities our size have it at fifty thousand. Oregon City, for example, theirs is fifty thousand for the, the city manager. Tigard, which is a lot bigger, is at a hundred thousand. But twenty-five thousand gives us that level of control where if anything is at the Oregon State level of requiring additional documentation, it would be required to go to the city manager. If it is below that, then the department heads, the, the department directors would have the ability to, to approve those items. And so what I really want to talk about today is what's the minimum level you're comfortable requiring the city manager to review? And what could we implement for, as a level for department directors and for managers to approve on these purchase orders in order to get the, the process moving more smoothly and, and have less that the city manager has to look at?
So Katie, you said you talked to some other cities. You listed Oregon City and Tigard, which are bigger than us. Did you talk to any that are similar in size to us?
Oregon City is the same size as us.
Anybody else that you talked to?
I sent out questions to other cities, but I did not get answers back. I'm curious, I'm curious why Oregon City isn't considered a comparable.
Well, I asked the question. You said they were comparable, so that's good to know, but wondering if they're more than one.
I say that because Adam said the same thing.
Oh.
When I mentioned it to, when I was going over the numbers with Adam. And so I, I compared the population and the budgets and all that, and they're really, really similar.
Councillor Chenoweth? Sorry, I thought you were done. Councillor Chenoweth?
No, go ahead.
I just want to follow up on that. Often, what we get presented to us is a, as a chart with comparable cities listed, and we'll get, you know, five or six cities so that we can see what the responses of other cities and what other cities are doing to kind of get a comparison, rather than a verbal on one. And Oregon City, I'm not sure if that's, that's, that's one that we have frequently had or not. That's not one that I, that comes to mind. I would be curious, Mayor, what our interim city manager's position would be on what, on this request and this ask.
Adam, interim manager, city manager, Adam Garvin? Is your mic on? There we go.
There we go. I think you can hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go. So I definitely see the, the intent behind raising the limits. I think, given the questions that the dais has had since you guys were, all came together the first of the year, I think making that large of a jump is likely uncomfortable, and I didn't really expect you guys to sign off on that large of a jump. I think you could raise it some, but it needs to be something that you're comfortable with from a policy body, and be right-sized for McMenville.
Do you have, pardon me if I follow up, Mayor. Do, do you have a feel for how many requests this is leading to the city manager having to field?
I approved eight today.
Okay.
Or yesterday. Sometimes it's five, six, seven a day. My, my goal is, your city manager is to respond to all requests, whether it's at the current limit or a higher limit within twenty-four hours.
Okay.
And I've met that since I've been here, nine days.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Councillor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to offer some maybe unsolicited clarity on why Oregon City is not a similar-sized city, and that's their proximity to the metro area. We've often used Kaiser, Redmond, and I think Medford or Grants Pass, something a little more rural. It doesn't have access to the same number of services, because we are, have a service desert out here. At any rate, hopefully that answers the question of why Oregon Cities, their, their model is different, too. They don't have councillors, they have commissioners. So their model, and they're paid. So there are a few differences. At any rate, to answering Katie's question, Finance Director Henry's question about what feels right-sized, I think personally, I would be opposed to anything over five thousand. But then I would also like to see some additional clarity on that related to the number of requests that can be submitted or approved every year before it goes to council, rather than considering, you know, thirty-five-thousand-dollar requests. I'm, I'm just curious if we can kind of cap that before it gets sort of chaotic in making sure that we're preventing specific departments from kind of spending the bulk of the budget, I guess, because at the end of the day, it doesn't, the five thousand means less to me than the totality of asks.
So here's the data I pulled together from last year in twenty-five, as far as counter purchase orders. So it, we only had, we had a hundred-and-twenty-four over twenty-five thousand. It'd be a little more than that because we have the end of the year. Oh, my gosh, we forgot things, which seemed to be quite a bit. Between the ten thousand and twenty-five thousand, we had a hundred-and-twenty-six. It's these, this, this larger amount here between the twenty-five-hundred and ten thousand that, that to me, and I will tell you to every finance director I've talked to who says that it's insane for any city to have an amount that low. I'll be happy to pull the other cities, but I will tell you, they are not going to be, they, we probably won't find one lower than fifty thousand. I'll be very surprised if we do. But that's, these are the numbers that you were asking for.
I'm on the same length, though, wavelength as Councillor Payne, that I'm not willing to jump from twenty-five hundred up to twenty-five thousand. I think that I need to know a little bit more about what's our procurement policies, and a little bit more of how this all process goes through. But I think that's too big a jump for me to feel comfortable with.
Is there an amount that people would feel comfortable with? That's, that's part of what I'm trying to get to. Would people feel comfortable at five thousand, at ten thousand? I know we're not making a decision tonight. I'm, I just want to know what to bring to you, because I don't want to bring a policy that's going to completely not work.
Councillor Peralta?
Yeah. Thank you, Katie. I really appreciate your work on this, and I definitely appreciate the intention behind it. So can you pull up, put up the slide that you just had up again?
Oh, sure.
The amounts? Great, thank you. So looking at that slide, it seems like almost all of the workflow is in dollar amounts that are less than ten thousand. When I looked at the City of Redmond, since, and I just did it because Councillor Payne brought up Redmond, it seems like their number is five thousand, as near as I can tell. And that seems like a pretty reasonable, if we want to increase it the first-time, number to, to jump to. And, and I'd be curious to know how many purchase orders that would remove. So, because I think the point of this is to change the workflow for staff and not have the city manager have to process a bunch of purchase orders. So I'd be curious to know how much of a dent that makes into the total number. But I'm in agreement as well with the Mayor and Councillor Payne that I'm uncomfortable But I'm in agreement as well with the mayor and Counselor Payne that I'm uncomfortable, especially given that the council mandate that people were elected with this cycle was to bring more accountability and direct supervision of the budget, that this seems a little contrary to that, even though it, I do understand the intent. So for me, 5,000 seems like a reasonable move in the first year, but I'd also like to see what that does to the workflow.
Okay. And I can bring that back?
Counselor Gary?
Just, just that, I think in line with you, Mayor, but I'd like to see, this is helpful for the dollar amount, but to me, that's the output of the process. And the first part is looking through the policies and procedures that talk about just the whole process, and then culminating with the discussion around the dollar figure would be more helpful for me to get to a certain point.
Counsel Cunningham, do you have anything to share?
Sure. I can totally respect the need to take a look at the numbers and what level that we are comfortable with. And my current experience with purchasing tells me that $10,000 is probably not a lot because a refrigerator right now costs me more than $10,000. So I can understand the need to streamline that as much as possible. So, but I also agree with pretty much everyone that is here on the DIAS. I don't think I could stomach a 10x increase. I think that does seem a little fast for all of us. And so, yeah, I think I'd lean somewhere between the 5 and 10,000 and could be convinced into the 10,000.
Counsel Chenoweth?
This is going to sound different than what I would normally sound like I'm saying. I would tend to lean more in the direction of Counselor Cunningham. I think 10,000 is probably a better number. I recently had the, well, not recently, in the last couple of years, had the experience of killing my first buck. I did that with a vehicle. And the amount of damage that it did to my car going 25 miles an hour exceeded $10,000. And so I think about, you know, things like that, that I really don't think we need to have a lot of discussion with the city manager for. $10,000 these days is, is a lot smaller than it used to be, unfortunately. So I would stomach an increase to 10,000. I would also be fine if the majority wants to sit at 5,000, but that's where I would be.
Okay, so you have some input there. And I think, though, that two of us would like to see a little bit more of the procurement policy overall as to be, if you can bring that back, or city manager can discuss it with you?
Yes. And then the procurement policy is slightly different, and there's a lot more to that. This right now is something that, I would do want to give you a little bit more background as well. With everything going through to city manager, my concern is that nothing is getting properly reviewed. I do not have that concern with Adam. Adam has been very good at going over with me the purchase orders, and we've discussed what items need to be reviewed, but it has not. I would prefer that fewer things of larger value be properly reviewed than that everything just be checkmarked by a city manager, if that makes sense. My goal here is to make sense that everything that is risky be properly evaluated and reviewed. However we get to that point, that is my concern.
I would say your concern is not necessarily on this, then. It's on who we have as a city manager. That's how I hear that, and that we need to have a city manager that we trust and goes through the policies that we assign to him, and if, him or her. And if they don't, then that's truly the problem, not increasing how much is approved. And I think that we do have to have a procurement policy prior to understanding how much we're willing to allow them to spend. It does come first.
So there's, oh, sorry.
I just was going to say, I think it has to come first.
Okay.
Counsel Tekolsky, do you have anything? I know, Jessica, you have your hand up, but let me ask Counsel Tekolsky first.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm in kind of an annoying spot, but hopefully it's quieter. I'm along the same thought process as Counselor Cunningham, Counselor Chenoweth. I think 10,000 minimum is appropriate at this time. It's a good spot to start. Private industry, at least, it's being able to spend, I can spend $50,000 without utilizing other people within my organization. So private versus public, obviously a little bit different, but I think 10,000 minimum at this time is appropriate, so I'd like to start there.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Tekolsky. Counsel Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. If all the items are, if all of these procurements are budgeted in our budget and we're reviewing the budget, I could be talked into going up to 10,000 as well. Director Henry, I appreciate your mention of sort of like the more risky things, and perhaps that's an opportunity for that procurement policy and understanding what, what risky means. And then what would, those procurements that would be kind of outside usual and customary, so to speak, so that there's some definition and guidance kind of for those maybe one-offs and less likely to be budgeted items.
And so that's where my, my other question for this section comes from, is there are templates for procurements, for procurement policies. And the one we have right now is fairly generic, and basically it says, we'll follow state law, which is fine. But there have been a lot of questions from you in council when we are following state law and we're getting pushback saying that we're not doing things the way that you would like us to do them. And so what I'm trying to understand is, is what, what is it that you are wanting us to do? And let's take quotes, for example. So there are several different ways that you can get quotes, or you can do a competitive, a competitive procurement process. And that competitive process can be, you go out and you solicit three quotes from different places, or you can have a sole source, meaning that you have verification that there is only one vendor who can provide exactly what it is that you're looking for. Or you can have an emergency procurement that the city manager or council has declared that we are going to do a, an emergency, and we don't have time to do a full RFP because there's sewage leaking into the street, for example. Or there is the one where you piggyback on another contract. So if you have a local government that is requesting a similar product to what you have, who has done a competitive procurement, so they have gone to an RFP or they have reached out and gotten quotes, then it is part of state law that you can use that agreement to do your purchasing. It creates a lot of efficiencies, it decreases admin time, and it's a way that a lot of governments do business. What I've heard before is a lot of pushback saying that we didn't get quotes when we've used this type of procurement, and I'm hearing that again tonight. So I would very much like to know, is this council asking that we not include that option in our purchasing policy? Or is it that we just need to have more education on that type of procurement? I just need a better understanding.
I think that it's, for tonight, we didn't know until we asked. So I think it's the transparency of telling us, so not educating us as much as telling us. So until I asked, if you had asked any other, we didn't understand that you piggybacked and that that is a process. And I, so I feel like it's more of telling, explaining to us. And then you mentioned the lawnmower. That was also one that we didn't have the education. And we've talked about that since then, and it's just adding it to the staff report that we understand the process that was gone through to get to the price that you're asking.
So that, it's in the packet for the council tonight, and it was in the staff report for the other. And that's why I'm, that's where I'm coming in confused. I just want to know what, what do we need to do differently? Because I haven't had this issue with other governments where I've worked that, and so I don't know what, what I'm presenting wrong or differently.
I did not see that.
Can I?
Yep. Counsel Peralta?
Thank you. Katie, first of all, I really appreciate your perspective and your, the way that you bring things to us. I, the procurement process that was described tonight, that was the first time I'd seen, I had seen that type of procurement process, at least that I'd been made aware of it in probably, I don't know, eight or nine years of being on city council or however long I've been on. So I just hadn't, I personally hadn't seen us piggybacking on another city's procurement process. And so if other members of the council were surprised or confused by that process or thought that it was just a single vendor, I can totally understand where they're coming from because I hadn't seen that myself. And so I think that what I'm hearing from members of the board, and I think this probably applies to some of the earlier examples as well, and I think the mayor was trying to make this clear just now, is that there's an education process that happens for us on the board. We don't come in here a priori with knowledge about how all this procurement works. And so when somebody comes in with questions, but they're not necessarily coming in from a, an informed perspective, but just concerned that things are happening appropriately, I don't think that necessarily means that the counselor is saying that you're being inappropriate or staff is being inappropriate. I think it means that they're bringing questions in and that they would like more clarification on it. I understand that the mayor's saying that, that we need to review the procurement process, and if there's changes that are necessary for the procurement process, I get that perspective as well. My perspective is, I don't think we on city council should be micromanaging procurement. That's just my opinion. I think that, that when you are making purchases, by and large, they're happening within the context of the budget that we've already agreed to. They're, so unless there's something that needs to come to us that is related to an out-of-budget purchase, or on these large expenditures where the city manager and more vetting is necessary, you know, I can understand the need for that, but I'm worried a little bit that you're kind of chasing, not wanting pushback from the council. Like, we need to come up with something so we're not getting pushback or questions about this. But I guess my perspective is you're always going to get questions from us about these things. Like I said earlier, I feel like the current council was elected with a mandate to try and put a bit of more of a microscope to some of these purchasing decisions and that type of thing. So I just don't think you should be surprised by it. And I apologize for going so long, Mayor.
Hi. Any other?
So, oh, go ahead. To just wrap up this section, we do have one more section in the work session, I want to make sure that my takeaway is accurate for what I need to come back with next. What I'm understanding is that I should move forward with the procurement policy using state law and the true understanding of what procurement should be based on Oregon law, with also the understanding for the local and departmental approvals, that we're not jumping up a bunch. I'll take into account what everybody has discussed. And I can bring that draft to all of you, and then, once you've seen that, and I have spelled out the specifics, including the piggybacking and all of these other things, you can then ask questions if you have them, you can propose changes if you need to. But I can start with the full policy, with all of the legal things that we are currently doing, and all of those spelled out in the policy format. Is that correct?
Counsel?
Mayor?
Response? I have nods of yes.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay.
And thank you for bearing with me while I ask these questions. I just really want to get clarity so that we can all work together to move forward on some of these things.
Perfect. Thank you for answering them.
Last but not least tonight, we have the transparency portal. So I'm very excited to share with you our transparency portal. But I want to start with the city of McMinnville webpage so that our citizens can find the transparency portal, should they need to. Now, as we are going into this, I have to give a small caveat, which is that the software is still working on getting the interface with Tyler Technologies. Our accounting software is not the easiest to get data in and out of, and they're still building the daily interface between the two. So as of right now, it's a stagnant interface where we have to do an upload to get the data, and it takes a lot of manual work. So you will see things that are through a certain date rather than seeing them as of right now. So to find the portal, if you go on the city's website and you go to government and then to finance, you will see at the beginning, we're beginning to roll out of our new transparency portal, Open Book, you can access through this link. And if you click on this link, you will see Open Book. Now on Open Book, and I'm curious if that's coming through large enough that you can all see it, or do I need to make it a little bigger on my screen?
I think you're good. We have it on our...
Can you get it a little bigger, please?
Oh, sorry.
Let me see if I can.
Yeah, I can see that now, thank you.
So at the top of this screen, oh, by the way, I am also looking for input on this. My goal here is to know what types of information, what types of data you would like to see on here. And this can be you, council, it can be you citizens, it can be you city employees. There is a feedback button here, and if you click on this feedback button, it will open, it should open an email. And if you click, send us your feedback, you can send an email. It will go, right now it's going to Crystal, but these will all be routed to Crystal and I, and we will take all of the feedback because we're working to create a much more robust transparency portal that can have both financial and other types of data. We're also working with communications to make sure that this is a seamless, seamless portal, and Noel has been helping us with that. So down on the bottom of the page, you have what we call spotlights. So each of these is a little card. So for example, budget basics. This is a little handout for where do we collect taxes? We've got maps we can use. We can have any kind of a pamphlet that we want to give out to citizens with just basic information. And I know you're saying, get to the good stuff, we want to see the numbers. Anytime you're on one of these spotlights, if you click on the logo, it will take you back to the main page. Now, let's look at the adopted budget for the year. First, let's look at this top part. And the first thing you're going to say is, that doesn't match the adopted budget. Don't worry, I'm not giving you false numbers. If you look at this sentence here, please note that the figures presented below are the appropriated amount for actual expenses and do not include contingencies or ending fund balances. So my goal here was to show, what does the city have to spend on expenses? Again, we can change this to whatever type of information you want to see. So please feel free to let me know what you would like to see. So please feel free to let me know what you would like to see. Now, if we start at the beginning, just this expense budget drill through down here, we can see the various funds in the city and we can see the total budget. If I hover over this line, we can see that the general fund has $32.6 million that we can spend. That percentage that it's telling you, that's the percentage of the city's total. Now, if I click on the general fund, it now breaks it down into departments. So I can see each department in the city and what their budgets are. Now, I might want to look at it in this format, but I might want to see, okay, what is the percentage for each department? So I can click on this percentage tab at the top and I can now see what percentage of the city's budget is each department. So police is 38%, 12.5 million. Parks and Rec is 11% at 3.7 million. We come over here, the court is only 2%, 809,000. So that's another way that you can see the budget. Another way you can look at it is as a table. So we can look at the budget in the form of each department and the amounts. Now, if we go back to the amount tab, you might want to extract this information. You may want to give it to a citizen. You may want to put it in an email. You may want to use it for some information. If you click on these, this hamburger right here, on the hamburger menu, you can see, if you want to see the graphic in full screen, you could print the chart. I'm going to take it up a little further. You can download the picture. You can download CSV. Of course, I'm an accountant. I like raw data. So I like CSV files. But, you know, you may just want to see the data. So now here, we can see just the data in a table. So there's various things that you can do. Also, you should know that this formats for a tablet. It formats for a computer and it formats for a cell phone. So it auto, automatically adjusts what the screen looks, what screen you're using to make it usable. Now, you may want to change how it's broken down. So let's say that you're really only interested in salaries and you're not, you don't care so much about the total budget. You just want to look at the salaries budget. This explore by gives you different ways to break things down. So if we go to classification and fund and apply and look down here, it now has our budget separated out into materials and services, personnel, and then it divides that out into personnel by fund. And now, when I click on the fund, it gives me the departments and this is just showing our personnel. So there are various ways to drill through into the information. Now, this is just the budget. Now, we can also create graphics. And I'm going to go back to the main page to show, for example, our budget to actual. You'll notice here I put through 8/13 because that's when we did the static data upload. We're supposed to have a response. We have a meeting tomorrow with our software contractor to see if they have made progress on getting the daily implementation. And at that time, of course, the, the date will come off here and it will be a daily update. So in this budget to actual, here we have the individual funds. And I apologize, my screen, it's probably because I'm bigger. We have the individual funds and here we have the budget, that same 32.6 million. But then we have the general fund, we've spent 1.8 million so far. If I click on that 1.8, now what you're seeing is each department, what their budget was and what they've spent so far to date. And if we click through here on police, for example, we can see how much police has spent for their personnel, for their materials and services, transfers. And if we go further in, we can see what was spent in each line item. Now, as this stands right now, this is the deepest I have created on these individual graphics. This does have, I can set up ones that will go through to the individual transaction levels. And we can also go to whatever level of detail you are wanting us to put in here. So my next question, since this is a feedback session, is what level of detail are you, the council, looking for in this transparency? Are you looking for it at the account level? Are you looking for it at the vendor level? Are you, what, what amount of information are you looking for in this transparency portal?
Councilors, anybody have anything to share?
I can start.
Councilor Cunningham?
Thank you very much for this. It is always exciting to be able to drill down and see each individual department and the expenses. And I think at this point, with my general understanding of everything, I think I'm, that looks great. I think one of the things that I've heard prior on this council is that, you know, being that we're looking at a budget in the general fund of 30 million plus and we've spent about 1.8 million that's, that's picked up through this. And I assume there's a little bit of lag time and just invoices that come, you know, get, come in, get paid. And so it's, it's, there is payments still there that are probably within this, this period, if you will. Is, does the software have the capability of almost like forecast? I guess, I don't know, forecasting would be looking forward, but like, are we in line where, with what we expect to be?
So yes, we have those options. In my, in my past, in my previous roles as finance director, I always had a projection going. And then I was always comparing to where we were to the projection and I had some accounts that, that were equal across the year and some that had seasonality applied to them and things like that. I would very much like to get there for McMinnville. We learned this morning in a training on the software that we do have that capability. So again, that was the training, we had three hours of training this morning. We, we learned how to do that forecasting and how the software can work that way. And so as soon as I can figure out how to apply that, what we learned today, I can create new ones that, that can show us our forecasting and I could add that into it if that was something that we were interested in, in seeing. It will take some, some work because I'll need to look at past years and trends and make sure I get a good understanding of that. But I think that is a really good idea. I like to work with projections and, and where we're at with that. I don't like to just work with the full year's budget and, well, we still got room, so let's keep spending.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good to hear. Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually heard Councilor Cunningham's question slightly differently than the answer. So I don't know if that's because I have a different mindset or if maybe I heard it the way you intended it. But what I was hearing him ask was more about the current budget cycle and are we in line with what we budgeted for the year? Some sort of indication within the software that would tell us expenditures to date were, are where we expect them to be or we're spending more for the year than we should have spent but for the existing budget year, those kinds of projections. So we can see as a council, for instance, when we're coming into a meeting and we see something that's being asked to be spent out of a specific budget and it wasn't budgeted to begin with, where are we at? Do we have the funds there? What does it look like, et cetera? Is that a potential option going forward?
Yes, that's what I was describing, or I thought that's what I was describing.
I was hearing more three years forward, not current.
So in, it has both options. But within the current year, I don't like to do so much as one-twelfth every month because a lot of accounts aren't one-twelfth every month. So I'd rather be able to give you the weighted trend for the year, like property taxes come in on certain months and things like that. So I, we found out that this software can do that for each month of the year. And then I'll be able to give you that so that you know that through March, for example, this account should be at 70%, but this account should be at 30%. And then I'll be able to give you those graphics once I go through and assign those to each account.
Perfect. And I guess I was thick in listening to your answer and did not understand your answer.
I apologize.
And thank you for restating it. And yes, that would be the one thing. I, I'm, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm a little leery of getting too granular because at least when it comes to information that we're getting, although we needed to do it this last budget cycle, I think there is, and, and we're supposed to be policy level and not too micromanaging. And so I, I'm a little leery of too gran, too much granular data. I like what I see, but I would like, current year projection is probably the bigger thing that I would like to see.
Excellent.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my comment is, do you see this as a tool that staff will be using as they're preparing their budgets annually?
Absolutely. We do have the option of having tools that are internal, that have, that have much more detail. And staff has logins down to the individual line item, which we're starting on training with them. There is some concern if we had the line item detail about the number of questions we could get and how much staff time it would take because there are so many expenses. And would it be worth that time or not?
Sure, and can I follow up? Yeah, so what I'm hearing is you might use it for a, for a private view that staff, professional staff have access to more information than the public. And that certainly makes a lot of sense in terms of how you use it. Where I was going to go is that, you know, I'm not a finance person. I don't have any expertise in finance. And so I feel like the people who are using the software the most should be able to find this page useful. Like, people in the city who need to access these budgets should find it useful. And if they do, then generally speaking, the public probably will as well. By that, I mean, you know, if people are using it in a way that, that can help them professionally, then the general public will have that same, will get enough information.
Okay.
From it. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Katie, I'm excited to have this. Thank you for putting all the work in to have it because it's, it's nice to be able to look and just see where, where we're at. It is 6:55, so you have about five minutes. Do you have anything more that you need to share with us?
No, I am done with what I have for this portion.
Perfect. All right, anything else? Nope. All right. Good night. Thank you for your time. I'm going to close the work session at 6:54.
Recording stopped.
Good evening. I will now call the City Council meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Claudia, could you please do a roll call?
Councilor Payne? I see Councilor Payne on Zoom. Council...there she is. Councilor Cunningham?
Yep.
Councilor Tokolski? I see Councilor Tokolski on Zoom as well. Okay.
I am here.
Thank you, Councilor Payne. Councilor Tokolski? Councilor Chenoweth?
Here.
Councilor Geary?
Good evening.
Council President Peralta?
Here.
And Mayor Morris?
Here. If you're able to stand, please stand as we say the pledge. And I'm going to ask interim city manager Adam Garvin to lead us in the pledge. Now it's time for comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments. And any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some time in the future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. We will start with those who have preregistered. Claudia, do we have anybody?
No one has preregistered.
Do we have anybody on Zoom? And no one on the phone? Anybody in the hall tonight want to speak that didn't sign up? Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to reports from councillors and on committees and board assignments. And I'm going to start with librarian in Parks and Rec, Jenny Burke.
Give me a second here. I just recently received a review from Katie Noid about summer fund. So there was an estimate of 7,200 people participating in the programs over the summer that were put on by Library and Parks and Rec staff. There were concerts. There was a stuffy sleepover, ice cream social, of course, the bookmobile going out every week, and some new programs. Science Saturdays, drop-in soccer and dodgeball, and Puzzle Palooza at the Senior Center. Park Playdates that happened in Upper City Park, which we're doing...we continue to do a lot to bring the activities that we want to see in the parks. And then we also had a lot of partnerships in terms of working with YCCO, the School District Nutrition Services, Fostering Hope Initiative, OSU Food Hero, Third Street Books, the City of Lafayette, Friends of the Library, Two Dogs, the MDA and other partners. Really pleased and proud of the Parks and Recreation and Library staff for all of these fun, exciting programs that they brought to our community over the summer for all ages. Other updates, the Aquatic Center and Community Center are both closed this week for maintenance. And Monday, the Parks and Rec management staff, we held a planning session, a three-hour planning session to sort of set goals for the upcoming months. And that was a really well-received planning session. And we also have a similar planning session for the library. And in that case, we're bringing in a consultant that is being paid for through a Ford Family Foundation grant through the Friends of the Library. And that is happening on September 22nd.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Jeff Hunsaker?
Okay. First, for the elevator contract that's on consent later, I just wanted to point a couple of things out with that. One, it has a 10% extra work as authorized clause in there that allows the project management team for that to make small scope adjustments to keep the project moving without having to go through larger contract adjustments. As the project is going, we expect small things to come up as we go. Right now, procurement time for the materials and equipment on that elevator contract's looking like 14 weeks. So that means work starting likely December and hopefully an operational elevator. I'm looking at you, Gianni, about February timeframe? Okay. Got it. We're in operations with park maintenance. They're preparing the dancer fields for fall soccer season. As Jenny mentioned, Facilities is helping out with those closures of the Aquatic Center, Community Center, doing electrical and plumbing work. Then Street Maintenance is about to start up their annual mastic programs. It's where they go and fill larger cracks in the street that we can't get to with crack sealing. For engineering, paving crews scheduled... for Cypress and Fellows, paving crews scheduled to return in mid-September for the final lift. And striping will follow that the next week, weather permitting. We're getting close to that time of year where weather gets into our operations with stuff like paving and striping. For the Hillcrest Private Development, they're not going to be doing any work on Labor Day this Monday, so we authorize them to work next Saturday or the Saturday after Labor Day so they can take full advantage of the dry weather that's out there and get as much of that grading work that they're doing up there done. Then I'm going to try to get through this wastewater division update without any unintended puns. Looking at you, Zach. Dang it. Bio-solids hauling's still going well. We're down to about six feet of material in those storage tanks. We held back on a lot of maintenance earlier this year as we were doing the solids treatment project. And so we're scrambling to get as much of that done right now during the summer season now that we know that plant's operating correctly with the new process. And that's about it.
I think Councilor Cunningham had a question.
Yeah. You'd sent out the email about the blasting. And it had said that it was just going to carry on on Tuesdays until the work was done. Do we have an idea how many Tuesdays that might be?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I can get James to give me an update, and I can send it out to council tomorrow. They did do their blast today. James showed me the video of it. Pretty cool. But yeah, they set up for one blast every Tuesday, essentially. And then they move the rock around for the rest of the week. But I will see where they're at on their schedule and get you an update of how many more Tuesdays are left. Okay, thank you.
All right. Vicki Hedges, HR Director?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just excited that our new interim city manager is here. So I've been helping with onboarding and also just kind of getting caught up on some of the HR stuff. And part of that included sending out an updated employee handbook to all employees this week. So looking through that, each year, we have sent out an update since we wrote the new handbook, which is great. That's all for me.
I just want to publicly thank you for serving as interim city manager. Thank you. You did a great job. And Scott, thank you for the backup. And Scott Burke?
Okay, thanks, Mayor and Council. Just one project that the IT team in partnership with the finance team managed to knock off last week is our...we did a pretty major upgrade of the ERP system. Every year, we do kind of a software update. But every four or five years, we have to do the whole kit and caboodle, which is a little bit frightening because we like to get paid and vendors like to get paid. And there's things you can't break in the world. And payroll and ERP system are one of those. But we did a lot of it on a Sunday. And it was really smooth on Monday. Knocked a few...
Right.
Knocked a few small things out in the week. So we're pretty happy about that. And we're going to go on that front for another four or five years till we get to rip it out and do it again. That's what we do. Beyond that, we're just deploying a lot of replacement PCs this fall. 'Tis the season. And a few people on council are up for those, too. So we'll be...
Yay.
I think we got you last week. Megan got you.
I'm super excited to have one that stays charged.
Oh, that's great, yeah. Every five years, you get that new one. It feels good. So we'll be tracking you down next week to get new laptops for the... I think there's three more people to catch. That's about it.
Great, thank you. City Recorder, Claudia Cisneros?
Yes. Just a reminder about Thursday's special called meeting. We did add an executive session. I just sent out the revised agenda so that we are starting at 11:30 instead of 12:00. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st, in observance of Labor Day. And then, as a reminder, we...if you want to attend the LOC 100th Annual Conference, that's still available. And if you would like to be the delegate voting person for the city, please let me and the mayor know.
We need a person. Somebody who's willing to be that person.
We need you to stop that. And that's all I have.
All right. I'm going to jump to Finance Director Katie Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick update on court. We have quite a few, more than 25 applicants for the position we have open right now. That position will close later this week. And then...so we hope to have someone in the position by the beginning of October. It'd be nice if it was sooner, but these things do take time to get all of our interviews and backgrounds and all of those things done. We also have...the finance team is committed to backing up court, so having the doors no longer closed if court staff isn't available between 9:00 and 4:00 Monday through Thursday. So we've heard you that you want to make sure that the city hall doors stay open. And so we do have a finance staff member who is onsite each of those days. And they are now aware that they will be covering the front desk. In fact, you can see...this week is a great example because court is...the entire court staff is in training this week. So some of your finance staff will be at the front desk this week. You can see them there. In finance, we are...tomorrow is our last check run that will have payments related to fiscal year '25. So we are still closing out payments for last budget year. This means that we are very close to being able to provide you some of those...the draft numbers for year in '25, which also then gives us the revised beginning balances for '26, which lets us know where we will be, you know, what extra there may be to roll over since we were very frugal in that last quarter of the year. But it was all an estimate of where we would end. So coming up in the next month, we'll be able to have all of those calculations. Finance staff, a lot of finance staff are working comp time, overtime, getting things ready for the auditors. As soon as we close those books, we have to turn things around. We have about two weeks to get things...everything wrapped up and over to the auditors so that we can get that audit done in time. So that is what finance is focusing on right now, besides launching the new budget software, which we're also doing right now. So that's what we're up to.
Great, thank you. Community Development Director Heather Richards?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. A couple of things. We have a position that just opened up actually yesterday on our Planning Commission. So we're going to start advertising that. The Planning Commission, for those who don't know, meets twice a month. They are the ones who are reviewing all development plans that need to go to the Planning Commission and/or City Council and are very involved in future growth and development in our community. So if people are interested in that, please contact the planning department, and we'll get you an application. We also wanted to let you know that we did host a meeting with our development community. We sent out about 300 emails to all our developers that have been active in our e-permitting system over the past year and a half to see if they wanted to meet with our staff to talk about our customer service delivery and our lobby hours and anything else that they wanted to visit with us about. Myself, our building official, Jeff Hunsaker, and James Lofton, and David Bernicker, our planning manager, all made ourselves available for that meeting. We only had four people show up for it, two representing the same development team. And we talked through their questions, which were mostly about their independent projects. They seemed happy with the customer service and the delivery that they were receiving and the lobby hours that we had. However, we're continuing to do some research on who's accessing our lobby when we are open and what needs they have so that we can respond to the city council's request to look at expanding our lobby hours. And I know that Adam Garvin, as the interim city manager, is taking the lead on sort of identifying and evaluating that for city...all forward-facing city facilities. So we'll be working with Adam on what that looks like moving forward. Also wanted to let you know, we sent out about 300 letters to property owners two weeks ago that could potentially have tree groves that would be impacted by our natural resources program that we're putting together. We wanted to show them the data for that. We wanted to talk to them about the program before we brought it forward to the Planning Commission, City Council for consideration. And we've been working with property owners on that. I will say that the response has been really positive. So we've gotten a lot of phone calls from people and emails saying they're happy to see this happening. They want to protect the trees on their property, and they want future property owners to protect those trees as well. We did give property owners the opportunity to review the data and the assumptions. And if we were wrong in some of the field data, we have to show us that so that we could amend it with the consultant team. And we had a couple of property owners provide us that information. So we'll be providing that to the consultant team and moving that forward. So good, positive outreach in that regard. And then lastly, wanted to let you know we're working on landscape code amendments to make our landscape review more streamlined and easier for the development community to navigate and also easier for our internal team to review and administer as well. And you'll see that coming to you. I think at your second meeting in September, we're working through some last issues with that, with McMinnville Water and Light, as those amendments also impact their facilities. And just in the last couple of weeks, we have been working with the state of Oregon on dispersing the two grants that... we worked with Representative Elmer on getting from the state for workforce housing. So the $2 million for the workforce housing associated with the Hillside subdivision has been dispersed. And then we will be dispersing a little less than $200,000 in MV advancements for their housing for seniors and people with disabilities. So excited to get those funds into the community.
Councilor Peralta has a question, Heather.
Heather, are the MV advancements sites, are those going at the new...where the new structure is on 99W?
Yeah, so the housing will be behind that, behind that structure on 99. It's a second phase of the project. The infrastructure to support the housing was put underground for this first phase because it ran under the parking lot.
Thank you.
Councilor Chenoweth has a question as well.
On the opening on the Planning Commission, is that at large or is that ward-specific?
Yeah, I just realized you were going to ask me that. And since I am on the East Coast, I don't have that answer for you. I will try to get it and maybe send it to Councilor Chenoweth if you want to know later on.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, the application process for that is the only way that someone can apply is to email the planning department? Or will there be an open application like our...
Well, there'll be...it will be a solicitation process much like all of our other solicitation processes for the committees. It will go out on social media. It will be posted on the website. And we'll also put advertisements in the newspaper. But most of our applicants are direct applicants. They're contacting us, and we're sending them applications.
Okay.
You have to talk through the committee.
Who are we losing?
Beth Rankin has resigned.
So it's Ward 1.
Good job, Councilor Geary.
Thank you, Councilor Geary.
Okay, I'm going to go over here. Jody, you don't have anything to share? Okay. Chief Wood?
Looks like...does this one work? Okay. There's been a lot of conversation lately regarding the recent uptick in graffiti. So as a response to the up... as a response to the uptick in graffiti, Officer Johnson from the department took on the task of creating a, an agreement with local businesses to help the community abate graffiti when they have been the victim of graffiti. So the department has entered into an agreement with Walmart, Sherwin-Williams, Rada Paint, and Lowe's. And when someone is the victim of a graffiti vandalism, they report, when they report that crime to us, we provide them the documentation that they need to go to one of those four businesses and purchase the necessary paint or other supplies to clean up the graffiti. And those businesses have agreed to sell them at cost to people who are victims of graffiti vandalism. We're very grateful to those businesses for their partnership. And while it doesn't take the total sting out of being the victim of a crime, we hope it does help when they have to clean it up.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Counselor Cunningham?
On that one, because I've been cleaning up some graffiti on Third Street, just for general knowledge, when it's not spray paint, when it's the pens that they use, it's like a paint pen, I can tell you that generally, like, a strong detergent and just a scrub will take it off. I've cleaned graffiti off many, many times, and it actually doesn't take that much effort.
Thank you. City Attorney David Lightburg?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to draw your attention very briefly to the consent agenda. You'll notice that I am requesting the authorization for a new prosecutor contract. It is the extension, more or less, of the same prosecutor contract that we've had in the past. Shannon Lee Erskine was our successful proposer. We are happy to continue working with her and excited to keep her going, especially with some of the stuff that she's been working on lately. She's a valued partner to the city, and we appreciate that. I also wanted to let you know, as far as the department goes, if all timelines and expectations are accurate, you will see me at one more public meeting before I'm out on paternity leave. But I have nearly gotten everything in place for an interim city attorney during the time that I'm gone, and hopefully, very smooth communication and workflow should continue through my own email with some hired temporary administrative staff.
Two questions. Can you tell us who is going to be our temporary?
Yes, the plan is for Tyler Yeoman-Mallett out of the Hagerberg Firm. He's Walt's successor, Walt Gowell's successor, and is the city attorney for a number of local communities right now, and has space and capacity to take this on for the six weeks I plan to be gone.
And then, since you brought up the city attorney, or excuse me, the Erskine Law, in the resolution, it doesn't have any dollar amount in the actual resolution, should it? Has no contract information in that resolution?
It doesn't, and doesn't need to, because this was a line item in our budget.
Okay, perfect. That'll save me when it gets to the consent agenda. First report, interim city manager, Adam Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. The first week's been very busy with back-to-back meetings, and appreciate all of ET that's scheduled meetings or already met with me, as well as council that's done the same. Still have a little bit of space left between now and goal-setting to squeeze a couple remaining in. And then after that, I'll be moving on to community stakeholders and partners to get their lay of the land and make sure that we're moving forward in a cohesive fashion.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Zoom. Counselor Tocolsky? Counselor Payne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report. My commissions and committees have not met since our last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Payne?
Nothing to report.
All right. Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, I actually didn't have any committees meet. We will have Historic Landmarks meet while we're in our goal-setting session. But the couple of things that I did do, and mostly with the mayor, throughout the month, went on the watershed tour of all of our watershed, and I found it fascinating. It really was really something cool. I kind of wish our entire community could get to see it. And maybe we can with drones in the future or something like that, so. And then, just last week, we went to the city-county dinner at Carlton, which did a fantastic job of hosting us. And unfortunately, I was not a winner of any of the raffle prizes. But with that being said, we were given a presentation on where Homeward Bound is at with the construction of their new facility. And as many of you probably have seen on Highway 18, it has doubled in size, I think, in the last week of what they've been able to get up. And we were given kind of an update of what we should expect. And I think for all of those who have had some concerns over the dogs that we've been dealing with, they are definitely increasing that capacity for both, not only city services or city needs, but the public's needs as well. So, and that is it.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 13th, while you guys were on the watershed tour, I attended the Pacific Northwest Aeronautic Association Aero Connect Summer Social and Northwest UAV Innovation Campus Tour.
Say it twice.
Statewide. It was, it was, it was an interesting group. We had 60 people attend. This was the third PNAA event in McMinnville, and that is thanks in large part to Lori, by Lori Robertson of Cutting Edge Metals, who is a MEDB board member. The attendance was great. I was able to spend a few minutes speaking to the group about the great things that are in McMinnville, making sure to encourage them to visit downtown before they left. Also had several side conversations about upcoming openings of industrial land that might fit their needs in the innovation campus. Right after that, I didn't get to stay for the tour because I had to go straight from that to the MEVLC meeting. We were undertaking kind of a round two of meeting agenda planning. And it's including more members this time around than the normal process, more to follow as we kind of nail down exactly what that's going to look like. On August 14th, I got the pleasure of assisting in the ultra-competitive zucchini races. It was an amazing time with the kids. Grand champion, in my opinion, was a zucchini car that I lovingly named "The Pink and Yellow Feather." It was, it was a great time. I missed my normal fellow counselor who comes and joins me, but it was a great time, and thank you very much for giving me that opportunity to be there. On August 19th, the Southwest Area Plan had their second meeting. Agenda items that we covered were electing a chair and vice chair, existing, covering existing conditions reports, the, doing kind of an economic analysis report, discussing the opportunities and the constraints of the lay of the land. And then, most importantly, we discussed the upcoming September 13th Community Design Workshop. So for those of you that are interested in being a part of the planning of 640 acres coming, that are now in the UGB and are coming into the city, I would encourage you to come down on the 13th to, I think it's going to be in this building, to be a part of that design workshop. On August 21st, sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
Busy couple of weeks.
Proud of you.
Parkway Committee met and discussed the current options for the funding of the next phase of the bypass. And I wanted to spend a little bit talking about what's happening right now. We are into a construction of the bypass, and it includes the following: realigning Oregon 18 with a new connection to OR 219, adding eastbound exit, westbound entrance ramps, entrance ramps, and installing new traffic signals at these intersections, adding a bridge carrying the eastbound exit ramp over the top of Oregon 219, removing the old Oregon 18 alignment, realigning Winuski Road to meet the intersection of 219 and Wilsonville Road, and we'll install a new traffic signal at that intersection, removing the old Winuski Road alignment, and then widening OR 219 for an additional travel lane, sidewalk, ADA ramps, and drainage. All of that's going to be happening with an anticipated ending in late 2026. Last, but not least, last night, I got to be a part of a meeting in which the, our two local House reps and our state senator met to kind of discuss what's happening with the special session and what's anticipated going forward. And it looks like, I think the projection is a $5.8 billion package that's been proposed, or $5.6 billion package has been proposed, is likely to make it over the finish line by the end of the special session. And that's the news.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I met this week, this last week, with Casey Shook from Homeward Bound Pets to discuss their current operations, operational plans, and licensing as a follow-up to her presentation at the city-county dinner. Just to kind of camp on to Counselor Cunningham's report, they're about two months out from completing the new facility. At that time, they'll have capacity to take about double the number of dogs and up to 75 cats. And they're currently doing spaying and neutering for stray cats, stray cats and dogs in the city for $55 a month. So we'll continue having dialogues with, with Homeward Bound about city services. Thank you, Mayor. And then I had a couple of housekeeping requests from members of council. Just a reminder to please do your best to respond promptly to staff requests for information so they can move projects and tasks forward without any unnecessary delays, and you can make sure that your feedback is fully considered by staff as they engage in their planning processes. And also, just a reminder that when we commit to attending events on behalf of the city, just to try and make sure we follow through, I know people's schedules change, but if it does, let the staff know as soon as possible so that we can try and fill those vacancies. And I want to acknowledge, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm guilty of some of those things myself, so just appreciate people being mindful about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to Counselor Gary.
I had a visit McMinnville meeting, which we approved, July profit and loss financials. They did the board, some highlights from Data Steve's presentation. The market is up and consumer sentiment is up, which is bucks a few-month trend, where consumers are maybe feeling a little bit more comfortable traveling and engaging in activities. But the future is yet to clear up based on recent volatility. So feelings up, but hopefully that pulls some of the numbers up. Some interesting, pullback from Canadian travel has hit Portland and the area the second-most in the nation. So Portland is feeling the second-most effects in the nation of Canadian travel stopping or slowing down. 94% of our downturn is due to Canadian traveler pullback. So ours specifically, the loss we've had, 94% of that is due to Canadian traveler pullback. The US hotel forecast for RevPAR, revenue per available room, will be declining and is forecasted to end in the negative, though as we look closer and closer to our neck of the woods, the Willamette Valley is 72% occupancy at $156 per night average. And calendar year to date, 61% and $142 average daily rate. In McMinnville specifically, we went up a point from last month in occupancy, but went down about four points in average daily rate. So a little bit more people at a little bit less money per room. Some things about McMinnville that the Visit McMinnville facilitated, they hosted the editor-in-chief of Bon Appetit magazine and journalists from Cherrybaum. Four articles so far in August, which includes Portland Monthly, Only in Our State, and Azure Road. Investment portfolio has started, so they're on board with some investment of their money in to make it start working for them. They're underway on further developing Art Alley with a mural. I think maybe you read about that in the News Register, about a more of a Linfield focus, so it's kind of cool. And they're working with our mayor and the chamber on a day of service, which may be around October 18th, but I'm sure that'll be in your notes. Murak, we're scheduled to meet September 3rd, 4:00 PM at the CDC. Hope that one stays on the books. And then, providing information around the bond, MacPac, I've presented to the chamber recently, in McMinnville Lions and the Downtown Association, and have more opportunities out in the community to get the information out. So that's my report.
Thank you. My report on August 13th, some of this will be quick. I did go on the tour, the watershed tour, that Counselor Cunningham already spoke about. It is always a fascinating thing to be able to see the two reservoirs and the sustainability of the logging that Water and Light does. I was also able to visit the EVLC meeting that Counselor Chenoweth spoke about. On the 16th, I was, I wandered around with John Olson of the chamber and drank lemonade from probably over 30 stands. It was awesome. The kids were great, but I definitely had a sugar high when I was done. I will be filling this, the board seat that's been vacated by city manager Towery on the chamber board. I plan to hold that seat until we get a new city manager. And just a heads up, that the Chamber Awards Dinner is October 3rd, if you're wanting to go. And councilors, if you do, please respond to Claudia Cisneros. The May Tour, which is hosted by McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, we were able to visit Precision Analytical. Precision Analytical operates a lab dedicated to solving complex clinical questions. Their flagship product is called the Dutch Test, which helps providers with advanced hormone testing methods. It's very effective in its diagnosis and treatments to improve patients' lives. It's a pretty amazing business that has grown significantly here in McMinnville. I had a one-on-one with chamber president John Olson, and we discussed the bond, economic drivers, and committee relationships. Representative Elmer invited other state representatives on a tour that, again, was hosted by Water and Light. We took them to see distribution lines. We also took them to Cascade Steel so they could see exactly some of the bills that they proposed that have to do with power and surcharges, that they could see how it works and how it would affect the local economy and a big employer of ours. It was a great afternoon, and I appreciate Water and Light hosting that, and Rep Elmer for bringing the representatives here. On the 20th, our council got to attend the first city-county dinner, which Counselor Cunningham already mentioned. Yesterday, I attended, at the Discovery Park was the first Oregon Adoption Day, which is a new bill that was presented by Rep Elmer, House Bill 2019, who was adopted herself. And I attended, and very happy to say my husband was also adopted. And I'm grateful to his parents for doing that. Volunteer opportunities, Mike and I volunteered at Cruising McMinnville. Again, I love volunteering, and it was a very hot day, but very fun. And everybody can volunteer for the city on October 18th with our Community Service Day to celebrate the birthday of McMinnville. And we'll get the details out soon, and that is in conjunction with Visit McMinnville. And I thank them for that. That's all I have to report. All right, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any council request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved?
Second.
So I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Peralta. Any other questions? Nope? Okay.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tocolsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor President Peralta?
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed unanimously by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have to consider Resolution Number 2025-34, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Sally Swanson Architects in the amount not to exceed $300,000 for the American with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan Project. I'd like to call on Jody Christensen, Special Projects Manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure you can hear me okay. I've had problems in the past.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Pull it just a little closer and see if it'll work.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, you have to basically be that close, I think.
Like Jon Bon Jovi it. Okay. So before you, as the mayor mentioned, we have Resolution 2534. This is regarding the ADA Transition Plan. As the staff report indicates, the plan is a requirement to develop a formal ADA Transition Plan. It applies to II of the Federal Americans with Disability Act, with the Disability Act. The mandate for a written plan is triggered when a public entity employs 50 or more people, and that includes government operations like municipal offices, courts, state-run universities, and public transportation systems. So obviously, we fall within that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or if Heather has more to offer. The plan is outlined in the staff report, the elements that will be executed for this transition plan, as well as the professional staff that comes in to do that work. So it ranges from an architect to special inspectors, people who are certified in this work, both in building inspection and in ADA measurements and requirements. So we wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to to fully understand what this transition plan will do.
So I just had a question, which I think I've already had answered for me, but I just want to make sure I put it. So there were multiple proposals, and this was the one that was chosen?
Yes.
So I just want to have that.
Four proposals, and this was the one that ranked the highest.
Okay. And then, and the $300,000 is coming out of the ARPA funds. I did see in there it was plus $50,000 of staff?
Yes.
Is that also coming out of the ARPA funds as well?
I believe it is coming out of the ARPA funds. I'm looking.
Yeah, Jody, I can answer that. So, Mayor, the $50,000 for the, for the internal project management is one of the amendments that you made to the ARPA funds as a city council, and I think it was just recently here in the 2025 resolution when that was amended to do that, when the decision was made for Jody to lead this project.
So it's part of that budget part? Okay.
Yes. Yeah. And it's currently in the adopted fiscal year '26 budget.
Okay.
As such. I guess I would also add, if I could, the, there's been some questions about the need for the ADA Transition Plan. Obviously, this is a federal mandate, that's one need. The other need for it is for the city to understand what barriers we have on our public facilities for accessibility, and then having a game plan to remove those barriers. The transition plan, what it will do is inventory inventory all of our public facilities, so the public right-of-way, our parks, and our built structures. It will come out with a list of what the barriers are, will then work with city council on prioritizing how we're going to remove those barriers in priority, and then the, we'll put together a game plan for that removal. We have the opportunity to sort of control how we want to approach that in terms of the priority, and also how we want to control how we're going to invest in it by putting this plan together. Without the plan, if somebody, if somebody files a DOJ complaint, the DOJ, the Department of Justice will give us the game plan on how we're going to remove barriers and what the priority for removal is, and how much the city will need to invest in those removals. The city then went through that process many years ago and had to reallocate a lot of their general fund into responding to that Department of Justice decision. So the ADA Transition Plan not only allows us to understand what our issues are, it also allows us to proactively remove the barriers, but it allows us to decide how we're going to do that and what resources to put into it. Gives us that control. The other thing I would say is I've worked on three ADA Transition Plans in three different communities. Well, this would be the third. The art, the consultant team that's being recommended to you tonight was the highest-scoring consultant team for everyone who participated on the review process. There were five of us who looked at it. And they are probably the most qualified consultant team that I have worked with. They have both architects on staff who are specialized in ADA issues, and then they have engineering technicians that are also specialized in ADA issues. And they have talked to us about bringing their team here to McMinnville and be geographically located here and opening an office here while they're doing the work. And then they will also, this is what they specialize in and do with communities. And so I feel that we're lucky that they had the time in their workload to respond to our RFP. We were able to negotiate with them to get the budget down to what we had proposed for this project. And we have also added to that proposal, Jody was able to negotiate with them to add to that proposal, a review of our programs and services for ADA and accessibility issues as well. So that means looking at our website and how that is accessible or not accessible, and other types of program deliveries that aren't structural. And to be able to do that in addition to the structural elements is really a bonus for us in our community.
How long do you anticipate it to take?
We anticipate 12 to 18 months.
Council Gary?
As a reminder, for me, I was trying to pull up that work plan list of the current ongoing planning efforts. Can you go, give a recap of what efforts you guys are currently working on that this will be in conjunction with?
Are you referencing the Long Range Planning Work Program?
Correct.
I think all the open programs right now?
Yeah.
For the Planning Division?
Correct.
So because Jody's not in the Planning Division, she's a Special Projects Manager, this has sort of been stepped out. It was originally in the Planning Work Program, it has been shifted out for Jody to lead in this regard. But the other programs that are underway right now that the Planning Division is working on is the Southwest Area Plan, finishing up the Natural Resource Program work, that's the Goal Five work from our 2020 UGB Amendment, finishing up the natural hazards work, which is the Goal Seven work from our 2020 UGB Amendment. But both of those are probably about 80% done, and will be brought to you here, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, for consideration. And then we have the Landscape Code Amendments that I just shared with you, and you'll be in your work session on September 9th, be looking at the land use efficiencies work that has been underway. That's part of our next UGB sequential work plan that by state law, we needed to do with the state and have to submit by March 1 of 2026.
Any other questions? Council Payne or Tekolsky? I don't see any hands up.
I will go if I can get House of Screen to make it. I have a lot of questions, but I can send many of them, again, to planning for community development and see if I can get answers. One thing I wanted to offer clarity on is that while 19.3% of the community may identify as disabled, that disability does not necessarily equate to mobility challenges. The ADA Transition Plan only requires the removal of physical barriers, not cognitive or mental health barriers. So a good reference to that would be like just now finally getting to the point where we can accept online payments for municipal court. That would not have been covered by the ADA Plan, ADA Transition Plan. And so I'm not, I'm not loving the sort of selective nature in which we're getting information about this plan because it's very specific to physical barriers, which hopefully includes communication by the city standard. So I'm just going to put that out there, but I think I've been pretty vocal about that already. And then the parks were heavily evaluated by the FROZES Plan, so I want to be, I want the team in charge of this project to be very, very, very mindful of the fact that those assessments have already been occurred, and we already have a clear picture of the the physical barriers that prohibit somebody from using a park or parquet. And I would prefer not to pay a consultant to tell us what we already know. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Payne. Any other questions? Okay, so now it comes to the motion if we want to, anybody want to move to accept Resolution Number 2025-34?
So moved.
We have a motion from Council Peralta.
Second.
And a second from Council Cunningham. Any other discussion? Nope. All right. Claudia, please.
Council Payne.
I'll abstain.
Council Cunningham?
Aye.
Council Tekolsky?
Aye.
Council Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2025-34 passes by a vote of four, five, no, four ayes, one nay, and one abstention.
Thank you. Next up is ordinances. We'd like to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance Number 5163. Does any council need to declare an actual potential conflict of interest or accuse themselves regarding this ordinance? And the ordinance is, if you haven't found it on here? Sorry, bring it up. Going to call on City Attorney David Leitberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I seem to have misplaced my ordinance with its title to read for you.
I know, I'm trying to find mine online.
Yeah. Thank you. Just need.
Very.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance Number 5163, an ordinance adopting an update to the McMinnville Municipal Code Title XI Airport and Aviation.
Can you give us some discussion on it? Because, or is that going to be G F? Do you want to just give us?
It'll be Number Four on your script. So Willie's on.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, I'm still a David, David, David. Okay. All right. All right, so Willie, is he online?
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm here.
Can you just give us an overview, please?
Yes. The Title XI was, in some cases, pretty significantly outdated, and there's been a lot of changes that are occurring in aviation and also with the management of the airport that's ongoing. And so when I looked at this, I thought I was going to do a quick little update on it, but it, it ended up, well, a lot of the information is really pretty much the same. It did require a little bit of wording change, so I really kind of rewrote the same thing, the entire code. But in reality, a lot of the verbiage is the same. And just to give you an idea, the legal reference of the Aviation Act of 1958, well, there's been a dozen Aviation Acts since 1958. And so referencing the city code on that is a little bit old, you know? So then there's other items that that I brought in there. One of them is that the city is in the process of hiring an airport manager. I'm a part-time administrator, and what the city really needs is a full-time airport manager on site. And so that process is, has already gone through, and we have a new airport manager that's going to replace me, and he'll be coming on board the beginning of September. And when I rewrote that, there was, there was some confusion in there between the terms airport administrator and airport manager. And so I cleaned that language up so that, you know, it's a little bit more clear. The city manager is basically, in effect, the airport administrator because he's the city's administrator, and you really don't need a, a third person in there. So you, but I say that, but where the airport manager actually works is in the Public Works Department, and so that will be under Jeff, which is actually the, about the best place you can have, the airport, you know, because of its, it's really a utility type of thing. It's like streets. Other stuff that I, I, I added in there was airport land uses. There's nothing that clearly defined that the airport was supposed to be used for aeronautical activity, so I wrote a section in there. And there's been some legal work done with the FAA back in 2016, and, and there, there's some pretty clear legal language that's in the Federal Register that regards how we're supposed to use federally funded airports. And so I, I added that language into the code. The airport access was another one that needed to be cleaned up a little bit, as well as through-the-fence operations. Right now, we have, have precision in aviation that is a through-the-fence operation, meaning it's on private property, but accesses the airport through the fence. And in the past, that has been kind of frowned upon by the FAA and still is in some regard. However, it's not anything that should be denied, and it can be a very valuable option for the airport and the city. You know, for instance, if, if we had a manufacturing plant that's going into the, into the innovation campus, having that as a through-the-fence operation would have been a good idea. But, you know, that's just an example. So I cleaned that up. And generally reduced, you know, some restrictions a little bit. I did add a, I did add some definitions, and, so I modified several definitions and referred to the actual FAA's definitions a little bit more concisely or correctly, and drew out, and pointed out the informations contained in the Federal Aviation Regulations Airman's Information Manual, FAR AIM, which is the easiest reference for people to get. So that, and then I also added a section about drones. Drones are an up-and-coming thing, and so we need to start looking at that. And one of the things that is a major concern is the FAA has increased the altitude that drones can fly. They've gone from 400 feet, which is below the helicopter's traffic pattern, to 700 feet, which is within the helicopter and fixed-wing traffic pattern. And the city has no authority to, to do anything with airspace. So we've got standardized traffic patterns, we've got standardized places where airplanes can fly, can't fly, et cetera, et cetera. But what the city can do to protect, to protect the city from, from any legal concerns if there happens to be somebody that crashes into, you know, crashes drone into an airplane, the one thing that the city can do is restrict the takeoff location, takeoff and recovery locations of the drones. And so I put some language in there for that, as well as a map to show the areas not to take off and, and land the drones. And that, I need to clarify this, that, that can still be accomplished, but it has to be done with the airport manager's authorization. You know, I mean, we're hoping to get drones flying in and out of the airport, large ones. But what we're looking at is, is a concern for hobbyists and whatnot. And that area pretty much covers the concern, location for the traffic patterns, but it does not impact the model airplane airfield at the museum. So anything that's already in use is not, is not affected. So really, the whole thing is pretty much bringing it up to date and clarifying some items. And that area pretty much covers the concern location for the traffic patterns, but it does not impact the model airplane airfield at the museum. So, anything that's already in use is not affected. So, really, the whole thing is pretty much bringing it up to date and clarifying some items. I don't have much more to say, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions? Counselor Chinowith does.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was perusing through this, I didn't see anything in it that specified the process of hiring airport managers and who's given that charge. And I'm curious, and this may be going to David, our city attorney, where that is located or if it is located, if it was oversighted, and if not, if we can make sure that we have that clearly identified in the code.
That's typically something that's not in a city code for an airport. I would imagine that comes under some other section.
Attorney Lightenberg, do you want to answer that?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I was trying to look quickly, but I've not gotten there. If that is in the code, Willie is right, that it would not be in Title 11, probably in administration, but I don't know off the top of my head.
So, do you want to get back to Counselor Chinowith on that, then?
I would be happy to.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, could, we have Department Head GF or, I mean, Public Works Director, talked about how we went through this current process for an airport manager, because that hiring is already taking place, so if we could state what the precedent would set?
Yeah, I was aware the hiring took place. I just didn't know if we had something in place in writing so that it's clear what the processes will be going forward.
It's like any other staff position at the city, so it's, yeah, it's a staff position. So, there's multiple positions that are referenced in the code that don't have hiring requirements listed in the code. So, like the city engineer, community development director, those positions aren't necessarily called out of how you go through a hiring process for those. They're just staff positions that are at the city. So, this would be, I wouldn't necessarily recommend going through a whole process to name the airport manager as a, in the code, as a process for hiring it separately than any other staff position.
Counselor Chinowith, to that point, I think, for context, think of it like if we were going to replace David Renshaw with Public Works when he retires eventually. You don't want to create a call-out for every management level position where there is certain director positions called out in the charter, which I think is what you're getting at.
Right. I didn't know where the airport manager sits. Is it one of the levels at a, where it is a unelected officer? Or is it somebody that's under, say, the Public Works Director? And if it's under Public Works Director, then obviously that's not relevant to this discussion. If it's not, then it is relevant to this discussion.
Correct. It is housed under Public Works in the org chart.
Any councilors have any other questions for Willie or for Jeff? No? Okay, so we had our first reading. I'd like to have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance 5163.
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Cunningham and a second from Counselor Geary.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Takolsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chinowith?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously on its first reading.
Since it passed unanimously on its first reading, I will now ask the city attorney, David Lightenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5163, an ordinance adopting an update to the McMinnville Municipal Code Title 11 Airport and Aviation.
Do I have a motion to accept ordinance 5163?
Sure.
Counselor Payne?
Second.
Second from Counselor Geary. Any additional discussion? Claudia?
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Takolsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chinowith?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Ordinance number 5163 passes unanimously via a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You caught me for one more, man.
Oh, sorry. Don't go away. I'd like to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5164. Does any councilor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? All right, we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5164. And City Attorney David Lightenberg, will you please read it by title only?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5164, an ordinance amending Chapter 2.28 of the McMinnville Municipal Code to clarify the airport commission's powers and duties in association with airport tenants.
Thank you. Hi, Willie. You're on again.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, councilors, thank you. So, this was, this code was, is for the airport commission, and I basically clarified some wording and added a couple of items. One of them is, we've had a lot of problems, not just at McMinnville, but throughout aviation, where the airport commission has been comprised in a majority of people with a conflict of interest, that meaning they have either businesses on the airport or they have a stakeholder in the airport or something like that. And it's easy to see why that happens because originally, back when airport commissions were established, I guess, the cities didn't really know what to do with airports, and the only people that knew what to do with airports were the people on the airports. And so, that's just kind of how it happened. Things have gotten a lot more complicated in aviation with grants and regulation and all kinds of other stuff, and also with the fact that we really try to tie into the community a lot more than used to happen. And so, we now need to really emphasize that we look at who we have on there and if there's a conflict of interest that's going to change how we do business. And it's also important to keep in mind that the airport is an enterprise fund, and sometimes decisions have been made at airports, including this one, that have been contrary to the financial health of the airport. So, we want to look at that, and that's been in the past. It's not present. Then I've added a couple of corrections, changing it from the Community Development Department to the Public Works Department. And the part that I removed is the very last section, which is in, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, I probably shouldn't do that, but I will because I'm already there. The last section, which is in the powers and duties, was Section B. And basically, it had the airport commission acting as police enforcement and the ability to do violations and hold people accountable and provide civil penalties. Well, that's really not something you can just have appointed, and they're not police officers, so I removed that. And our police officers are the actual police officers that have jurisdiction at the airport. So, that was removed. The other things were just clarifying the powers and duties. Wanted to make sure that we actually gave the airport commission some substance for what they're supposed to do instead of, you know, just kind of saying, all right, well, look at the leases. Okay, well, that didn't do much, but I decided I really needed to make sure that the city, or the airport commission is looking at what they can do to help the airport. So, let's look at the land leases and whatnot to ensure that we're going to have a positive cash flow over time and those type of things. And we also wanted to make sure that it is fair. Everything gets accomplished in a fair and impartial process. So, that's really pretty much all it is, just really cleaning some stuff up and clarifying the duties.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any councilor have any questions? Counselor Chinowith?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to comment and just say, because I don't know when the next chance or if we're going to get another chance to have you before us before you mosey on down the road. But thank you for all your work you've done at the airport, and thank you for this presentation.
Well, thank you, sir.
Counselor Cunningham, are you gearing up? Okay. Okay, so, do I have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance number 5164 as read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Chinowith, a second from Counselor Cunningham. Claudia?
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Takolsky?
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Chinowith?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Since it passed unanimously, I would now like to ask City Attorney David Lightenberg to read the ordinance again for the second time by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5164, an ordinance amending Chapter 2.28 of the McMinnville Municipal Code to clarify the airport commission's powers and duties in association with airport tenants.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chinowith, a second from Counselor Payne. Any further discussion? Claudia?
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Takolsky?
Aye.
Counselor Chinowith?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Ordinance number 5164 passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:13 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Willie. Appreciate it.